All right, it looks like it's seven o'clock. I'd like to go ahead and call the meeting Silver Falls School Board Order like we were on our guest this evening. Please join me for the flag salute.
(Inaudible)
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 All right, this time I'd accept a motion for the consent agenda.
(Inaudible)
Second?
To move to second, any further discussion? Calls in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carries. But go ahead and call up our student rep, I see Austin out here this evening.
Jordan was unable to make it today. She's sorry, and she hopes to make it next time. I will cover her usual clubs and as well as my sports, and I'll begin with sports. Baseball's record now stands at 5-5. Coach Neil Glenn anticipates that the team will only get better as they are now warmed up and have scope for competition. Softball's record now stands at 3-6. Tomorrow at 4:00 they will be playing at Woodburn High School. Track and field reports that the entire team is doing better than planned, as many of this year's members are either new or underclassmen. Wednesday they have a meet in South Albany, and this Friday they will be hosting the Springfield Invitational. Girls tennis team captain Maddie Kinsey reports that this year is already going very well, as it is the first year that the team has had so many girls that there had to be tryouts. Boys tennis team captain Blake Wolford says that so far the year has been harder than anticipated, but now that the boys are aware of the competition, the team expects to improve. And now moving on to clubs. Key Club had their district convention during spring break. The convention was three days and held in Seattle. The club is in the beginning process of starting a key club at Mark Twain for the 2012-2013 school year. The National Honor Society helped with Silverton Together's Celebration of Cultures last Friday. NHS is now beginning to help at the Mission of Hope Food Bank every third Saturday of each month. FPLA will be participating in this week's State Business Leadership Conference. The conference will be held this Thursday, Friday, and Saturday, and the majority of FPLA members will be competing. Speech and debate was very successful at their district tournament last Saturday. The team qualified 10 students for the Oregon State Competition on April 20th, and this year's district champions. I being one of those, I'll actually toot my own horn.[181.81][181.81](Laughter) ASP is now finishing their touches on Mr. SHS. The event will be held on April 19th at 7:00 PM in the auditorium. The Interact Club helped clean up the baseball field at Robert Frost today during early release, and the students and staff of Robert Frost were very, very happy with their work. And that's all I've got.
Any questions for Austin? Thanks for coming this evening.
Thank you.
Thanks very much.
I'd like to open it up with audience and visitors, would anybody else like to address the board this evening? All right, seeing none, we'll move on. Discussion items, first is the makeup of the March 22nd District Wydelement Weather Day. We did lose another day a few weeks ago, any comments on that?
I had a few. I'm not a big, I have mixed feelings about it. The teachers are paid for those days that they miss, from my understanding, and so therefore I think that they should be made up, but at the same time, I think we should get a little bit more creative on how it's done. Whether it's an in-service day for the teachers, so it's not affecting quite so many people as you have exams, you have half-days, you have different things that are coming up that may be altering some of that around field days, whatever, so that they are not affecting exams, they're not affecting people who have started jobs and figured out plans. I mean, the people that are most affected are the people that have, that they have planned like months and months in advance to do things, whether it's a job or a vacation or whatever, and these people are being conscientious about it, and then they're being penalized for it. So, I think there's some creative ways, I don't think it necessarily has to be where the kids go for those last two days. Maybe it's an in-service day because that might be something that I think is worth conversation, that it really is affecting quite a few people, the more you talk to people, the more you're seeing that, you know, the people that are really trying to do it right and go with the school schedule are being penalized.
Other comments?
Right. You'd be next.
Well, I think that it's fine with me if we're creative, I think that makes sense, but I also think that we should make up the snow days or the inclement weather days. They're very valuable. Arguably, our instructional days are our most valuable asset as a school district in terms of the situation that we have right now. We find ourselves with, on the one hand, the public and patrons and the government demanding higher performance and achievement from our students, and on the other hand, we are caught in the squeeze of resources ever being ratcheted down. So I think we're past the era when we can just give away those days. If you live in Oregon and you expect to pay a day off because it snows, I just think that's not really a reasonable position, so.
Yeah, I've never been a big proponent of making up days in the past, because I think it's valuable for kids to have opportunities at home and working and whatnot. I think we find ourselves in a little different situation right now though, because next year we're looking probably having several furlough days, we're losing lots of instruction, plus, plus, we're getting short on funds, we're spending about $100,000 a day on school. I think we need to show taxpayers that we're getting something for that.
Yeah, my thinking's kind of shifted on it too, because when I first got on the board a few years ago, I wasn't a big, it wasn't a big deal to me if we made up, if we missed a couple of days, if we made them up or not, but it seems like every other meeting we go to, we're hearing about the new Common Core standards, and I just think, I just think, and with the shrinking budgets and stuff, I just think it's more, it's increasingly more important all the time, like David always said, to make those days up. But I'm also open to a little creativity, the only problem with, well, I guess you could have a professional day, just have an extra professional day without the kids on, like on one of those days or something, but I really, I don't know, student contact time is more important, is very important too, so.
Yeah.
I understand the problem with people who have made vacations and plans like that, but I know the high school lets, lets kids make finals when they get back, when they will get back from vacation, so it might be a couple, you know, a few weeks later, a couple weeks later, but they step that up to make the finals if they miss them, so I don't know, it's a tough call.
Well, the finals part, I know that some kids depending, you know, having finals moved two weeks later because of vacation doesn't set them up for the best success for that student. You know, that maybe the finals stay where they are, and then those structural days change. I mean, if you take your kids out in the middle of the school year, no big deal, three or four days, you figure out the homework and everything else, but you take them out those last two days that weren't expected, it affects everything a lot differently. And, you know, for finals to have them a week later after a vacation, you can't expect a kid to do nearly as well as if they had it when they had planned to. So I don't think it sets up the kids for a successful, I just really think that especially finals, you know, that they stay the same, because if you, this is a last minute kind of thing, people have made plans, it's not to say that those two days shouldn't be made up, but at the same time, be a little bit more creative about it, about the people that really have done things to prepare for the school calendar.
I think next year we maybe want to be a little more creative on, particularly when we're talking about adding furlough days in, maybe kind of backload many of those furlough days, if we happen to make up some old days, maybe we can make them up on the furlough days.
I think that would be really wise.
And prevent us from extending the school year. Anybody else?
I could talk about this long.
We'll get our chance later this evening. Julie, did you have a statement you want to make as well?
For the record, I'd like to disclose that I may have a potential conflict of interest related to the current bargaining process with the Silver Falls Education Association.
Thank you, duly noted. Okay, move on to Administrator Staff Reports, Andy, the State School Funding Update, and the School Resource Officer Position.
Yeah, and I'm gonna do it from my, from the front, I've got a couple slides I'll share with you.
You kids can probably move over here, so you can see better.
Since I was warming this up, Linda Brown walked in, and she says, "Oh, yeah, more of the squiggly lines." So, yeah, you get a few more of the squiggly lines. I have three slides that I want to share with you, and I think will send the message home about the current budget situation and where we are. Let's see if this will kick in. While it's doing so, I want to let the board know and members of the public know that we're in the second year of funding by a, by a NIM, from the state legislature for funding of schools in the state of Oregon, and it's interesting to note that the legislature, when they adjourned at the early March, there was a comment that, from numerous legislators, that they did everything that they could to protect K-12 funding. And while I think that's a true statement, it is a true statement, it's a valid statement, but the point that is missed, and the most legislators didn't share, and me honestly didn't pick up on it, was they protected K-12 funding that was for the most part insufficient to begin with. So we've got 50% of funding that occurred during the first year of the VIANM, 50% during the second year of the VIANM, and as you'll see here in just a moment, the 2012-13 school year for all school districts in Oregon will be operating at least three and not five years behind what we would like. In fact, you'll see by the way that we're operating at about the 2007, 2008 levels. So, the first chart is up here, is a comparison for Silver Falls School District, this is a specific tower district, of revenue, general fund revenue and expenditures. The blue line is the general fund revenue, the red line is the school district expenditures for any particular given year, and you can just line it up yourself if you can see where you are. When the blue line is above the red line, this is as simple as it gets, that's a good thing, you've got a little cushion. When the blue line is below the red line, that's not such a good thing, that means you're using reserves, or you're using some other options for having to balance the budget, or for being able to balance the budget. I'll come back to this information in a moment. So, with that in mind, any place that the red line was above the blue line, you have chosen over the last few years to tap into your reserves, which is reflected in your ending fund balance. Beginning in 2006-7, you can see where your ending fund balance was around 4.4 million dollars, the numbers on the left are represented, millions in the end of the year to the right. Projected at the end of the 2012-13 school year, based upon the budget that's being submitted to the Budget Committee, including you this Thursday night at your first meeting, that anticipated ending fund balance would be about 1.24 million dollars. Which leaves you on the third slide, and this I think is probably the most relevant, and gives also in my eye a reflection of the thoughtfulness and very intentional decision made by you as a board over the last few years. In fact, if anything, I commend the board because you're a model for what school districts should be doing, and that's very carefully and strategically moving into the future by keeping a close eye on your reserves, and that's what we've done. If you take a look, beginning in 2008-9, I listed the approximate amount of reserves that you use in order to balance the budget, 1.24, back and forth, you can read the rest of the figures, up to an anticipated 1.37 million dollars in the projected budget for 2013. Again, this leads you to an ultimate of about 1.2 million dollars in your reserves, which is 4% of the general fund. Based upon previous conversations in your work session, and I think the public is aware of some of this, is 4% is not a comfortable figure for you. In fact, I've heard a couple of you say you'd like that at 5% or maybe even 4.5% give or take. And I'm suggesting that one of the considerations that is made is considering unpaid furlough days as a way to balance that next year. And I say that largely because I think you have made it clear to me and to the public that you don't want to cut any more staff. You're not interested in reducing the teaching or the classified staff any more than you already have, which took a huge hit last year, and it'll take a slight hit this year. But the fact remains, we've got large classes in many of our buildings and our programs, and we don't, you don't want seniors getting larger as high schools as well. And in order to do that, I think you're gonna have to use some other options to make this happen. I do want to point out a couple of things, that in the 2009-10 school year, when we used 325,000 to balance the budget, you also had 3 unpaid furlough days. The 2010-11 school year, where we actually had an ending fund balance of just under $100,000, which was great, there was also 6 unpaid furlough days in order to balance the budget that year. The current school year, you have no unpaid furlough days, but if you recall this time last year, you were cutting 17 classified positions and 6 teachers. So, there are variables that can be used, and one of the variables is unpaid furlough days, the other one of course is layoffs, and all of those variables have to find a place within the middle of the general fund budget this year. So I share that with you, just give you a quick summary of where we are, and how we ended up actually beginning this Thursday. If you have any questions, if you have any.
Sandy?
And very quickly, I don't think that the press has picked up on this yet, and I know they will, if they haven't already, that the School Resource Officer currently funded by the City of Silverton, Silverton High School is not included in the City of Silverton budget this year. We discussed this a little bit here last week's session, they did confirm that with the city, and that program will be unfunded at the year issue, so there will be no School Resource Officer at Silverton High School, or available to any of the city's schools beginning next school year.
Andy, has that decision been made for sure, has it been locked in?
The city does not finalize their budget while they just like where you are right now. The communication I'm getting from the city however is that it sounds like it's going to remain. In fact, the current School Resource Officer, Terry Murphy, has been promoted to Sergeant, and as a result, we have powers to have a city hall, and so if there is funding available, they would have to select another School Resource Officer.
Sure.
I have submitted a letter to the city on your behalf, as you suggested.
Appreciate that.
And you should be a copy for that, along with being on the city council, so my hope is that there will be continued discussion and dialogue about it, but I think it's likely to happen. There are going to be chief patrol officers.
Andy, do you know when for the agenda would be, that they would be discussing that for the city council?
I'd have to take a look at their public notice for their budget hearings, and I'll find out.
Okay, thank you.
If you need anything, you can help me find it out.
Also, we discussed last time, we talked about this, possibly going to Marion County and see if there's any opportunities working with the Sheriff's Department. Do you have a chance to do that?
I haven't spoken with anybody from Marion County, I have asked Mark Hannah to look into that a little bit, and so we're still gathering some information on what's available. It's my understanding though, from Rick Lewis, the Chief of Police, that Marion County is under some similar constraints in maybe reducing their staff.
All right. Thank you. I'd like to move on to Jan and the Finance Report and the Food Service Report.
I have nothing further to add from what you received in your packets, unless you have questions that I can answer.
Questions for Jan? All right, thank you. Right, Kevin Palmer, U Creek School.
If it's all right, you guys, I'm gonna solicit Mr. Hannah, and so he can go and the kids.
All right, so Mr. Hannah and Ms. Towery are, looks like our FFA leadership group.
Davey?
Davey?
Well, it is my pleasure this evening that my board presentation will be Mr. Scott Towery and our Silverton FFA group, they've recently participated in their state competitions and have some pretty exciting news to share with you and the things that they're doing and their programs, and it's been a while since we've had an FFA update and felt like this was an appropriate time. So, Mr. Towery, would you like to, hello?
Yeah. First of all, I'd just like to, just a couple things we'd just like to share with you. One, a little bit about FFA, what it is, and some of the accomplishments that we've made the last couple of years, and also include with a little bit about some of the goals that the chapter has at Silverton High School. So I'm gonna let them introduce themselves, and we'll start down here.
Hi, my name's Maddie Heinz, and I'm currently the chapter's big resident.
I'm John Kinsey, I'm a reporting officer.
I'm Phil Towery, and I'm a junior officer.
I'm Logan Kinsey, and I'm currently in the vice president.
I'm Amy Kramer.
I'm Shelby Agnew, and I'm the report.
I'm Jeremy Dustin, and I'm the FFA secretary.
So as a chapter, we are very involved in not only the community, but our association altogether, so some of the things that we'd like to talk to you about is a little bit about what FFA does and what FFA means to not only you guys, but the public in general, and how FFA integrates into their lives.
Okay, so as some of you may know, FFA is a national organization, and what we do at Silverton though, is we teach kids about agriculture and what they can do for their future, and we help them prepare for their future in many jobs, agriculture jobs, and leadership skills, and the kids that can get involved are ninth to 12th graders at Drake High School, and we try to do a lot of personal growth to help them for their future in agriculture.
We do agriculture, we do agricultural stuff, and then also we do also speaking and debate, and you, we have wealth league contests, so it's like, it's not just agriculture, it's just learning your speaking skills and stuff.
So like when I started out in FFA, I didn't really know anybody, kind of helped kids, helped a bunch of kids, and worked my way through freshman year, I got my degree in Henry Green, and got me exposed to FFA, then did my chapter degree sophomore year, got to know some more people, did a couple competitions, and junior, Towery encouraged me to do the proficiencies because I worked a lot. I actually got first place in state, I never really expected it, it was worse. This year I went on to, I went to Nationals last year in Indianapolis, this year did some stuff, doing CDEs and all that, it's pretty cool stuff, the kid was holding me with a gun, rushing me over to there. We do, I don't know what Tammy said about performing to the public, we do Food for America for all the younger kids, like second grade through fourth grade, we teach them what agriculture is, and like, she's like cows, it's where it comes, but it comes from the root for it, and so that like the younger kids, the next generation can know like agriculture really is.
We also have a lot of community service projects, like we went to the nursing home, and we cleaned up their gardens and stuff, and made it improve more, and then also we do our, you guys probably saw on, Silverton Road, we do roadside cleanup twice a year, and so we try to do as many community projects as possible.
This year, I'm new in McCree's meeting, and I made it through sectionals and states, and I competed in Nationals.
For the last five years in a row, we've had a team compete in Nationals in our career development, and I'm like, Ronnie and Kerry Judging.
And actually, last year, me and Logan and four other people competed at Nationals in parliamentary procedure, so I'm sure that's something you guys are all very familiar with, but we made it all the way through state, just like Caitlin said, and we ended up getting a silver award at Nationals.
That's outstanding.
What?
That's outstanding.
Yeah, it was a lot of fun, we got our gables with our names on it.
Yeah, well, I have to add that as well, is out of the team, there are six team members, and four of them took a test, including myself, I kind of got my own spot, but we took a test, and they actually are certified commentators, so we have four of our students that came back from that, and two of them are here, so I had to drag a little bit about that because I was pretty pleased with that.
Yeah, so those are some, those are our big accomplishments as a chapter, our chapter, we also do a lot of things that aren't necessary geared towards our career development events or our contests through FFA. We do a lot with just as a chapter, we go out, we hold what we call our casino night every year, that just brings the chapter together, and we get to hang out, and do everything, and build those friendships, like what Andy talked about. We do Food for America, like Logan said, bring in the community, the younger children, and personally, I think that's one of the best ways that we can educate people about agriculture and about how important it is to our community. So, FFA, we're not only farming, we move, we have all of our sciences through our classes, that's not, we don't go out and sit on tractors during our classes, I know it's amazing, but all of our classes are basically science geared, we're very focused especially on the three-year science requirement, all of our, well, the majority of our classes can get that science credit to get students in and learning about agriculture and how it affects them in their everyday life. So, some of our goals, for me, that's one of our goals, is to be an advocate for agriculture and for the community on how important it's gonna be in the next 50 years, how important agriculture is gonna be, and play a huge part, especially on the population growth. I actually did a speech on the large population growth and how we can go about solving and feeding 9 million people in the next 50 years. So that's one of our big goals as a chapter. Do you guys have any questions about FFA and what we do?
Good job, well, you're a success, and you should get first in grade speaking at state. Awesome.
She got a degree in front of the entire association, I wanted to session.
Yeah.
That's great. Amazing. I was gonna add too, also, nobody forgot is one part about the Aggie candidates, that I was hoping you'd remember, but the students in the last, with the shop, I like to kind of brag a little bit about that, because we have such a nice facility there, is in the last three years, the students have taken projects up to the Northwest Action and they have brought home over $2,000 of winnings from that, so that's another, I think a positive thing that they've done with the, I guess, with the shop availability too, and the equipment that that can provide.
Are we still offering a certified welding certificate?
Yes, as a matter of fact, I am in the process of having it come in again and see if there's a few students that are in that process of getting their certification, so we do that towards the end of this year, so hopefully we'll get a few seniors that will try that, yeah. And one more thing too, with one of our goals, is I know we've worked with a little bit, we've had a hard time, I think it's a work in progress with getting Mount Angel students over to our program, but I will say that we do have, we've had a state officer from Mount Angel, we also had Caitlin Ayman, who has got a state degree this year from Mount Angel, so there still are some students that are getting some awards and are coming over and utilizing our, the Silverton FFA chapter. It's just one of those goals, I think, as our chapter, is to try to get more of those students, it's just a difficult, we don't have a teacher over there, and so it's hard to get those students to come over and participate, you know, without us going over there and constantly hitting over communities and some of that typical career development that we do in Silverton, so that's one of the things that is a work in progress that we're continuing to do. I look, we have students coming over next year, get welding, and also I think went shopping on our intro to Ag class, so.
Have those students come over for our Ag, Ag or shop classes as well, or they have that on plan?
Yeah, getting welding, we've had them over, generally it's varied from six to 12 students that we, that come over and take them getting welding classes. My goal would be that they actually come again and go to the higher level classes, our advanced welding, and possibly metal fab, but at this point, we only be able to get them over and stay with, just because I think the, you know, the class times and the schedule is just really hard to make that work, but I know that that's something that we're working on, so.
Any other questions?
Just a, just a comment, I think the community is just incredibly proud of your organization and the work that you do in the community, and the achievements that you've made as individuals, I think it's just incredible program, and so really good work. Besides, you really look incredibly sharp. That's very nice. Very cool. Thank you.
Andy, is it Andy?
Yeah.
What was your proficiency that you won state with?
It was special production.
Oh, okay, cool. And so you go to Nationals?
Yeah, I got bronze or something in that, I'm not sure how it went out.
The proficiency, once you win it, automatically gets entered into the national competition, and there's the three categories, there's bronze, silver, and gold, and then of the gold, they take the top four, and the top four contestants have to actually go back to Nationals for an interview, and then they're placed.
And we did have, we're all tailor-made, and then state proficiency and equal science issues.
Wow, good. A good job as a part of the ministry procedure to the Nationals.
That's a tough.
That's a tough one, I remember doing that. Good job, going to Nationals with that, awesome.
My kids used to hang that, bed in the shower, they practiced in the shower, of course.
Well, thanks again.
All right, thank you.
Good job. Thank you.
All right, Kevin Palmer, U Creek.
All right, good evening. I just want to say that for the FFA kids that just left, the elementary kids love that Food for America event. It's a great program, and they just look forward to going in every single year, so thank you for that. Up at the top of my report, just some updated statistics for Bucre, 302 students. Lots of volunteer hours, and our attendance is just under our goal right now, 95%, but we're getting close. And under academic programs, I just wanted to highlight a couple of things. They're mostly around our after-school and extra type of programs with AKA science. We've had more kids take part in this this year than we ever have before, including springtime, which is very hard to get a lot of kids there after school because of all the things going on in spring for kids. But you can see the turnout for K5, 25 kids in the fall, 23 in the winter, and 23 now in the spring term. So that's a very cool hands-on science program for kids. And then we have Game Maker, which is computer animation, kids learning actually how to make animated games on the, on the computer with Stacy Booth and Terry Woodall. And that's a free after-school program, AKA it's paid, but Game Maker is free. The teachers donate their time to be there, and they have 12 kids on Tuesdays and Thursdays in that program. And then later on here in April, we're going to have artists in residence coming, doing painting for the K2 kids, felting for the 3'5" kids, and drawing for the 6'8" kids. Three different artists, three different mediums. Now, you didn't know what felting was until they explained that to me.
Yeah, what is, they were...
Great art with felt.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, felting. Kind of just what it says. Which is what they explained to me. Our Russian class is doing phenomenally well. We have 42 kids enrolled for the spring session, and that's as high as we've ever been. The kids that have paid tuition for the fall and winter session, then we decided to give them spring session free charge. And we do a lot of fundraising, the Russian dinner brought in a lot of money, as you can see there, the grant from ROBS for the second year in a row. And the budget for the Russian class is doing very, very well. So plenty of funding there, and so we decided, you know, to keep it going strong, we give everybody a break on the third session this year. So that made the parents very happy.
How many days a week is that?
It's five days a week for the middle school kids, because this year for the second year, we, we turn the middle school class into an elective period at the end of the day. So that's five days for them, and then the K2 kids and the 3'5" kids go two afternoons a week after school. I wanted to point out a real success story with our kindergarten ELL class, or ELD class. As far as in scheduling, that we did outside of their regular class time. So if you turn the report over on the backside, it explains a little bit deeper. Top of the page is our updated Kinder assessments. In other words, the Language Arts and Math Assessment for Kindergarteners. I reported this before to you, 32 is the average out of 100 in the fall, 56 in the, in the winter, and then 83 in the spring. But we have a really unusual demographic in our kindergarten class this year, is we have just a fraction, under half the kids are ELL kids. And that's a very high percent, almost 50%, they're 12 out of 27. And when in our school, the average is more like about 20%. And so for that particular class, it's a very high percentage. And so we got into September, and, and what you need to do with ELD class is pull the kids out, you have to provide 30 minutes a day of English language development instruction for them. 30 minutes out of a kindergarten session is a lot of time. And the teachers came to me, the ELL teacher came to me, and we started talking. How can we put a class in that will not pull them out? And it was, we were stumbling on it for a while, not sure how to do it. But our morning class ends at 11:15, and our afternoon class begins at 12:15. So we have an hour in there. And so what we did was we worked with first student, we worked with the parents, to put a schedule together where at the end of their morning session, we would keep the ELL kids at school from the morning session. We just keep them there, take all the other kids home, while at the same time, we were dropping off the afternoon ELL kinders earlier than they would normally get there. So all the kids would be there at 11:15. We'd take them in, we'd fed them lunch, which kinders don't do at Bucre. So they'd eat lunch at school, and they would have a half an hour ELD class from 11:30 to noon with Cindy McKinney every day. What that meant was, they did not have to be pulled out for a half an hour out of their regular kindergarten class. And so that was not time lost with their teachers, a half an hour every day, time in there with their classmates and with their teachers. And those, the benefit to this is reflected in these scores. Those kids have shot right up, and they're right where they need to be.
There's no more bus running because you have to go out anyway to pick up the afternoon kids? Is that what you're doing?
Yeah, what we had to do to make that happen, we had to expand the time the buses were on the road. So it's costing us some money to do this, but it was money that we were able to find, and it was well worth it. Because to get those kids off to that great start in kindergarten, it's very important. It's going to carry on through with them, all through their schooling. And then next year, what we plan is to have two very small first grade classrooms to keep that going with them. So this has been a terrific success, and it's thanks to all the staff and the bus folks and the parents that, you know, had to rearrange their schedules a little bit with their kids to be able to get them on the bus earlier or pick them up later from class. So it's a huge success story. So we're trying to figure out a way to look at next year too, kind of maybe do the same thing.
Yeah, do you have a feel what the population might look like next year? Is this a trend?
Yeah, looking like about the same.
So it might be a trend, then?
Yeah, might be a trend. And I just wanted to give a kudos to Jennifer Drake, she's one of our special leads assistants. For a very small period of time each day, she rides her on those kinder kids as they come in to kind of transition them from the ELD class into the regular class. And so we don't want to forget her, and the thanks on this too. Everybody plays a part in it, so it's been great. As long as you've got your page turned, I also included a handout for you with some information on our Positive Family Support research study that we're taking part in. I mentioned this just briefly back in December, that we're going to take part in this four-year research study funded by the Department of Education. And it's really designed to focus on middle school students and ways that we can extend help and assistance to the families of students to better benefit them for success in school. And what we already do at Bucre now is we're a positive behavior support school. And that's one of the keys that will get you noticed in a study like this, is to be following the Positive Behavior Supports program. And so we see this as a natural extension of that program. Positive Behavior Supports, taking care of the kids in the school and to help them be successful, now to Positive Family Supports, to extend outside the school walls to their families to help with parenting skills that can help their kids be more successful. And we're often running with that now. Just before spring break, we, we gave the first surveys, so you get some baseline data to our sixth grade students. And then the actual program itself begins with a little bit of training this spring, later on, for Debbie Scott and I, she's our counselor. And then we'll get into the actual four years, beginning in the 2012-13 school year. And Bucre, we found out just before spring break, also was selected to be in the intervention group. Right away, there's, there's two different groups. One group would receive all the interventions and the implementation programs for Positive Family Support in the fall. And then the other would have to wait till the fourth year of the study. And so we were chosen to receive our implementation and intervention materials this fall, which is good. And we feel like we're going to be able to offer a lot more to our families, to our students. And although it's a middle school focus, that's for the research. The benefit of having the materials and support in our school is there for K8. So we're really looking forward to getting that cranked up all the way at Bucre in the fall as we go through the trainings.
So is this a commitment by the Department of Ed on this for four years in?
Yes. Yeah.
Good.
Yeah, it's a, it's a neat-looking program, and we're glad to be a part of it. So we'll go from there. Just a couple more things, we held the pre-bid conference out at Bucre today for our play shed expansion project, and had a pretty good turnout of contractors. So I think you all will see the bids in two weeks, the work session, and we'll see how those look. So that project's moving right on. And then two last things, our auction back in February raised just a little bit over $10,000, so very successful auction by the PTT. And I wanted to let you know Volunteer Breakfast is being held on April 20th. That's not this Friday, but the following Friday at Bucre, serving at 8:30. A little social time beginning at 8 o'clock, and you're all welcome. If you'd like to make that, just give us a call at the school anytime, and we'll get you down for that. It's a neat event. I'm going to say thanks to all the volunteers.
Questions for Kevin?
Kevin, how long have you guys been working on the play shed?
Uh, for five years. Yeah.
Nice to see that finally.
Needless to say, we're a little bit excited.
Yeah, that's great to see.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Mark Recker, Prattam, and Silvercrest.
Okay, well, let's start with things that are happening at both schools. Both of them district report on how we're doing with district initiatives. And a couple of the district initiatives this year were to, at the beginning of the year, Marcia Tate came in, presented to all the staff, to the entire district, and the intent was to arm teachers with a quiver of strategies, to use effective strategies for teaching. And so we came away from that, every teacher was to set professional goals related to that, and then to put them into practice in their classroom. So it is exciting to get around the classrooms and see that teachers are trying new things, new ways, based on brain research that are effective to ways of learning. And then the other professional goal that every teacher set was to post content objectives and language activities. And so what that means basically is they're supposed to put somewhere on the board what they expect students to learn for that lesson. And, you know, there's always a little bit of resistance when Big Brother comes in and says, "We want you, we're requiring you to do this." And so it's always interesting to see then what's, what's the result of that. But I've been in just about every week, not quite every week, but just about every week, I walk through the classrooms, and then I kind of keep track of teachers and their implementation of it. The theory is that if, if they're posting the content objectives, if they're, then they've had to think about, "Okay, why am I teaching this? What do I expect students to learn? Is it going to be more effective?" And students, at least the ones that can read, know what they're supposed to be learning, and then they're more likely to learn it. So anyway, it's been really exciting to see that teachers are doing it, and for the most part, seeing some positive impact. Even primary teachers where it's really not for the students, because the students can't read what the goal is on the board because they can't read yet. Those primary teachers are saying it's been good for them. So those district initiatives have both been working out really well for both schools. All right, so Silvercrest, I've been talking to you for, I think, a year and a half now about a process of school improvement that we started. Then it kind of flipped to the process of becoming a school-wide title school. We started that process, or made that decision about a year ago, and have been working on it that long. And I want to update you on that because we're coming to the end. We just about have our plan finalized and ready for final teacher approval, and then approval of our district Title I staff, that's Justin and Andy, I think. So it's been an exciting process. It starts with analysis of your assessment data, analysis of survey data, a lot of research into what's, then deciding, okay, what do we want to focus on? What are our weaknesses? How can we get better? Research into what's effective at meeting those goals, and then deciding, okay, what are the next steps? So a couple of the things we came up with, I've already talked to you about this, we could already do, because they didn't take a whole lot of implementation strategies and planning. And one of them was to increase student accountability. So that means making sure students are more aware of what their work is, holding them accountable for getting it done, keeping their grades up, that kind of thing. So making sure all students had planners, we consistently had them use it. Starting a new, started a new program, pretty sure it was inspired by something similar that Victor Point did called ZAPS, the Zeros Aren't Permitted. And I just want to report to you that that has been very effective. It's a weekly accountability for students. Do you have any missing assignments? And if they don't, there's a reward. And if they do, then they don't get the reward, but they get a period of time where they either lose a recess... I shouldn't say it like that, they gain an opportunity to complete their assignment. And we provide enough of those opportunities until they no longer have missing assignments. And students have responded very well. The most recent one, we had today, actually, there were, I think, six kids on the list, and most of them were kids that had been absent a day or two right up until that time. So it's been a really effective thing for students. All right, then the other thing that we could implement right away was regarding math fluency. We know math fact fluency isn't everything there is to becoming good mathematicians, but there's a lot of research that says that it's an important piece. And so it was something that was pretty easy to implement, and we've been doing that in all the classrooms at Silvercrest, is helping students, giving them the opportunity to practice, setting goals for them, helping the kids that still struggle. All right, and then the other two things that weren't easy to implement so quickly had to do with improving language arts instruction and student performance, K through A really, and then also math instruction materials, particularly K through 5. So after doing all the research, visiting schools to see what they were doing, and especially, we picked effective schools. We have focused on implementing a program called Spalding or RIGS. And we do have a language, already have a Language Arts Core Program, so it would not replace that, it would be in addition to that. And it's a little bit different way of teaching. It's a focus on, I think it's fairish to say, a focus on, it's a phonics-based approach. And we're implementing it already in our title program, and I think some in ELD, I think mostly titled L, and having good results. Done, we've kind of dabbled in all this already in some of the classrooms and are seeing exciting results, so. That's going to require the teachers go to a training over the summer, and then have some coaching throughout the year next year. And then for math, the struggle in math has been the switch to Oregon's new focal points. I think you're well aware of that. And at the time the focal points were adopted, there was no math curriculum. There was no instructional materials that truly addressed the focal points. And so at the time we adopted math materials, we decided we're not going to invest in something that we're going to have to cobble together, we're going to have to supplement to it anyway, so let's just cobble together things we already have. And it's been difficult, not very cohesive. And so what we found was a program called Singapore Math that holds lots of promise, not for the focal points anymore, because we've kind of moved beyond that with the new Common Core standards. But Singapore Math aligns very closely with the new Common Core standards. And so we've dabbled in that a little bit, kindergarten has already started using it, and having good, good success. It's very, I know you've heard that the Common Core standards are holding kids accountable, teaching them things about a year ahead. standards are holding kids accountable, teaching them things about a year ahead of where they used to be instructed. And our kindergartners are doing it. And so, when they go to first grade next year, they're going to be able to do first grade Singapore Math, which is really equivalent to what our second graders are doing now. So, we're excited to see where we go. It's going to be a little tricky with implementation. It's going to be a little tricky with assessment because Singapore Math is not directly aligned to our current OCS. And so, we could take a hit in our scores if we're going to really focus on this. But eventually, it's going to prepare kids for the new smarter balanced assessment, the Common Core standards. So, and that too is going to require some staff development and some coaching along the way. So, those were pretty big things. It's been an exciting process. One of the pieces is that for school-wide titles, you have to have 100% binding with all members of the school-wide planning team. And so, when you start saying, okay, you're going to have to go to a week of training in the summer, and then if you teach, and we have teachers who do teach both reading, language arts, and math, there would be a week of training for one and then some training for the other. And then, you start to wonder if your 100% is going to go down and they're going to be less committed. But it's really exciting to see that they're in it. They've bought into what these programs are about and are excited to try them. Not just try, I mean, we're ready to go. You know, that's a pretty big thing. So, I want to give you a question, time to ask questions about that now before I move on.
Just when OCS comes out, you may want to remind us that you are doing something a little different.
If our scores go down, I'll definitely remind you why.
Yeah. Which is where we're all heading. It's the right thing to do.
Yeah.
But if the kids are doing, you know, a grade ahead of where they normally would be, that's all I need to know.
It just might not be the OCS scores that show that.
Yeah. I mean, the OCS is going away, so, oh well.
Right. I hope you have that attitude. All right. Also, at Silvercrest, we just finished Spirit Week and mostly a fun thing, but a great time for kids to get in there and show their school spirit. Talent Show coming up April 19th, and excited to announce an international market, May 24th. It's all fifth through eighth graders. It's a big project they have to do where they work with somebody else, they choose a country in the world, and have to do thorough research. And then, they have to put together a booth at this international market that's in the evenings. And they have to sell food. They have to, I think, do a game or something. They have to, there has to be something attractive about that shows that they've done research and is evidence of their learning, but it's fun for other people to come to. So, that's May 24th. And that's your opportunity to write down on your little scratch paper, May 24th, Silvercrest School, 5:30. Be nice to see you there. All right. And Prattam School, while Silvercrest has been doing school-wide stuff on our PLC days, Prattam has been focused on writing. So, every building PLC, that's what they've been talking about. For the most part, one at a time. They've been going through the six traits of writing, how can we be better teachers of that. They've used a book called Best Practices and tried to make sure that whatever they talk about, it's aligned with what research is showing is the best ways to teach writing. Always frequently taking a look at student work and always being mindful that, so when they look at student work, they might look at second grade or third grade and say, okay, because that's where our transitions are at Prattam. What can we do to make sure second graders are ready for third grade? What can the second, what, last part of it there. And then, the other part is, okay, I'm getting these second graders with this ability. So, then, what can I do to, what am I going to need to do different? So, I think, I lost my words there for a second, so I'm not sure you figured out what I was saying, but I know what I was saying. We're in the middle of a pilot of iPads. So, I think Rena sitting behind me has one. If you've never seen an iPad before, I think she's got her personal one. But we're, there are districts, Cambie is one of them, where they're making heavy use of iPads and iPods. And what, as our laptops reach the end of their useful life, they're actually beyond the end of their useful life, but we're still using them. We're just looking at replacements. And if an iPad is a suitable replacement, we want to, we're thinking going in that direction. It's a little bit more expensive, but there's also, they're doing some pretty exciting things with them in other places. So, we'll take a look at that. The other thing, I think I should probably report to you on our kindergarten experience, combining kindergarten, partnering with Central Howell about that. And, you know, I don't see how it could have gone better. We put some things in place, having the kids come to Prattam first, spending about a half hour at Prattam and then riding the bus together over there. So, we have that cohesiveness, that attachment to Prattam, and that has gone really well. And then, they've gone, and even though that classroom has been really big, I think it's 20, is it 29 students, Justin?
Twenty-seven.
Okay. You know, that's a pretty big kindergarten class with a full-time assistant even. And hearing nothing but good things about what's coming out of there when I talk to parents. Some parents who had reservations going in. So, hope to, planning on continuing that relationship with Central Howell next year. And I'm pretty sure it's going to be a lot smaller kindergarten class, probably down around 20, but still with a full-time assistant. And how important is it to get a great start in kindergarten? And so, I think it's benefiting both Prattam and Central Howell because we're able to get them a full-time assistant. And they're able, for Prattam kindergartners, are getting a straight kindergarten and not, just not being thrown in with first and second graders. I mean, it always worked in the past, but this has been a good thing too. Pancake Breakfast, April 21st. You can write that down too. And spring program, May 24th. And that's the news from Silvercrest and Prattam.
Any questions for Mark? On store writing.
Are you guys working with iPads now or you're just?
Up to, we bought two iPads just to try them out.
Okay. Good. That's.
There's a big push in the technology world to eventually replace textbooks with these things.
I'm not, so you don't have.
Confused with the economies of that yet.
So, you don't have, so you don't have to buy textbooks?
Yeah.
Question's going to be, how long do these things last? We don't know yet.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can we move on to border ports? Do we have any border ports this evening?
Yeah, real quickly, I'll, I won't take long. The weather's getting up. Well, this was a while ago. So, yeah, this was a while ago. But I went to the high, got to go to the high school one, and I need to go back because I didn't get everywhere I wanted to go. But lots of really, really good things as usual going on down there. The math department doing really good things. I'm always impressed at how they, how hard they work to get the kids where they want them to be. And there was a, there was a, Tom Steers had an Algebra II class going on in one room. In the room right next door to Lucky Rogers had the math lab for that Algebra II class. I was working with the kids who needed extra help. And that's really neat. And I know from experience with my kids in there that they really just really work hard with the kids and they let them make, you know, retake tests. And they don't, they want them to learn, and it's really cool the way they do that. So, good things there. The English, lots of good discussion going on. And some English classes I went to, science experiment going on in Mrs. Yarnell's class that the kids were having fun with. Kind of, they had potatoes and they were putting them in different kinds of solutions to see how much they expanded and stuff. Pieces of potatoes I cut up. So, I guess they're, I don't know. But they were having fun with it. Mary Rankin's basic skills class is always a treat to go into. The dogs come up and greet you and bark at you. And then, the kids were working on some art projects and some of them were working on computers. Quite a few, quite a few kids in there, but they were doing really good things with them. I could tell. Steve Turey's SLP class, he does a good job in there too, keeps those, keeps those kids on task. I was really impressed. I walked in, I didn't get to all of the, all of the new teachers, but three of them I walked into. And sometimes, you know, you can just walk into a classroom and you think, wow, this is a good teacher. They've done a really good job. And it was that way with every one of them I went into. Mrs. Roth's Spanish class, I was going to go in and she was standing on a chair doing something. And I was, well, I'll wait a little bit. So, I went back later and she was off the chair. And she, but you'd have to sit in her class very long to, the kids were really engaged. She was doing a really good job. And so, I, and it was kind of funny too. I walked past her at the end of the period and she was standing up on the chair again. So, I asked my daughter why she's doing that. My daughter has another period. She's, well, she was working on, you know, identifying body parts in Spanish. So, so that was really cool that, you know, a teacher will go to that extreme to help the kids learn. Mr. Pyros had a class of kids who hadn't passed their writing, their post writing test or were working on it. And really hard bunch of kids. I mean, really, I was really tough group that he had in that classroom. And he was just patient and doing a really good job. He was excited. When I talked to him, he was excited about teaching them. And new science, the, excuse me, the art, both the art, the ceramics, the guy's name, can't remember the guy's name.
Dany Boy.
Yeah, yeah. Dany Boy. Some really cool ceramic stuff. These kids were doing big pots. And one girl was working on this alligator that just looked, you know, right to the T. It was really good. Really neat stuff there. The new art teacher teaching drawing and painting was really good. She explained to me some abstract painting, which I've never really understood. And it was really cool to see how they started with a tree and then go to the abstract side of it and then bring it back. It was just some really neat artwork. If you guys are ever, when you get down to the high school, go past the theater into the art section and look in the cases and stuff where they have the works displayed. It's just some really neat stuff the kids are doing. Like I said, I didn't get everywhere I wanted to go, so I needed to stop back in and see a couple of other things. But just some really cool stuff going on at the high school.
Thanks, Tim. Could report. Anybody else? All right. Move on to correspondence. We received an email from the Metzgers regarding the makeup day. I think you all saw that. I'd like to open it up to the second audience with visitors. Anybody else like to address the board this evening? Still no takers? Okay. Move on to action items. Do we have an action item this evening?
I have one possibility regarding the makeup day.
Makeup day.
For making that action, I would like to see if there would be some alternatives that could be brought forth by some of the schools of how to get a little creative with that.
Do we have time for that? I think we have to, have to make a decision by the 15th, correct?
If you take action, it has to be prior to the 15th. So, there does have to be action tonight. I can respond to Julie's question. I have spoken with Linda Myers a little bit about this. And if it was a consideration by the board for having the makeup day be for professional development purposes, that we could come up with professional developments related to Common Core standards. We may even be able to do some writing scoring on that day. There would be plenty of things that we could put into place on that if it was exclusive to teachers or licensed staff only.
Do you have time to prepare for that?
Yes.
Like I said, I support the extra day, but I do think that it should be creative and that the kids aren't penalized and that exams aren't changed. And that if there is, you know, things that go down with other families and stuff, that it'd be taken into consideration for the ones that have really tried to go with what has been given to them as a school schedule. So, I would be, you know, in agreement that the teachers should make it up, but I would like to see some creativity by the schools to make sure that, you know, also help the people so that the kids have the best success possible.
We already added Monday as a student contact day, though. Would the exams finals would still be, it'd still be finals on Monday at the high school?
Even like a field day change, you know, so that it is a fun day, a grand finale day, you know, just so that you're, I'm not saying it's not a contact day on that Monday, but be a little bit more creative for the things that are being mandatory for those students.
Let's ahead, not.
I still haven't, still heard a motion.
So, I would move that we make up one additional incumbent weather day. Is that, that's what we call them now, not snow.
Correct.
So, that would be my motion.
As a student contact day?
As a student contact day, yes. Well.
One additional or the one we've already made?
Or as a. One additional, one additional.
Student contact day or as a non-student?
It could be whatever the district administration decides, I guess. Well, let's make a mess of this day.
It can be a staff development day or it can be a student contact.
Yes. We make up one day and it could be a staff development day or whatever. You can authorize the administration to make that distinction if you like. I mean, I'd like to hear some influence by the board members, but.
I think that's a motion to make up the day for teachers as a staff development day.
Yes.
Would there be a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, it's moved to second. Need further discussion? All right. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
For clarification purposes, the, you took action at your last meeting to make up Monday, or use, make Monday the 17th as a makeup day, as a student contact day. That has not been changed. It would require reconsideration of that motion by parliamentary rules if you were to do that. So, Monday, the 17th is still a student contact day. Tuesday, the 18th is now a staff development day. Correct?
Correct. I think Julie's recommendation is particularly high school, look at that and not change the final schedule, correct?
Yes. And that, you know, change the field day or something, get a little creative with that last day for the students rather than changing the exams for the people that really have tried to work within that school.
So, I'm not hearing that as a motion, is it?
Correct. I mean, we can look at options. I don't know what that would look like entirely, but surely we can look at options.
All right. Anything else this evening?
Okay, right now, we'll go ahead and adjourn regular session. We'll take a short recess and then go into executive session per ORS 192, that's 6x0 for labor negotiations. Thanks for coming.